Okay, this meeting is called to order. Annual notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 31st, 2023. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on October 16th, 2023, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpborough.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Buyer exits are to the left, to the right of the council chambers, and please speak into the microphone. December 14th, 2023, Highland Park Planning Board. Borough Hall.
Ms. Han, Mr. Bretcher.
Here.
Mr. Chin.
Here.
Ms. Hadhazy.
Here.
Mr. Hale.
Here.
Mr. Linares.
Here.
Mr. Malley.
Here.
Mr. Perlman.
Here.
Mr. Stern Cardinal.
Here.
Mr. Eisdorfer.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Lynch.
Here.
Mr. Cosenza.
Here.
Mr. Katch.
Here.
So we just have one major item of business tonight, and that's the preliminary investigation report of a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment downtown area, Track C expansion block 2202, lots 1, 13, 19, 31, 37, 38, and 39. And so I get whoever, Chris, you're going to be giving the report?
Yes, before we, before we begin, I have a matter I need to put on the record.
Okay.
So, um, it's a matter of which I conferred with, with our counsel, Mr. Thomas, yesterday. I have a connection with Garden Homes, which is the conditional redevelopment, to be precise. I represent my law firm, I'm aware, now retired, but I was a partner in the firm Hill Wallack. My law firm represented several LLCs connected with Garden Homes. Specifically, I represented in 2015 Duck Pond Associates, which is a single, a single purpose LLC that owned property in West Windsor. And I represented them for about a year, a long tedious trial, those details we want to talk about. My firm continued to represent Duck Pond LLC for another two years. I ceased working for the firm, see, I ceased my full-time connection with the firm four, four years ago, and I ceased my, any connection with the firm a year and a half ago. The firm still does represent two LLC, single purpose LLCs associated with Garden Homes, one in North Brunswick and one in Englewood, Queens. So I turned to council and requested advice on whether I need to recuse myself.
I had consulted us with Roger earlier today, and my only question would be, would this past representation of the LLC years ago affect your ability to be a partner tonight?
No. I have no loyalty.
We, we checked, looked at this, and we also see that they are comfortable to interest.
Okay, I accept that, that direction.
Yeah, Roger gave me a heads up as well when he informed me I have a chair tonight. So I thank you for bringing it forward and in the spirit of having an open meeting, but you know, defer to the attorney, and we're good to go. Whenever you're ready, Chris.
All right, thank you. Speak once. I guess we'll be presenting on the TV monitors. If anyone's sitting further away, coming into public record, might be a little bit better sit a bit closer on TV, sort of a test run, see if it's works. If not, perhaps in the future we bring back the projected screen. So at the end of the meeting, let us know if this was effective. All right, thank you, members of the board. As indicated, on the record is preliminary investigation.
Chris, is your microphone?
Can you?
Yes.
Sorry, closer to them. As indicated, this is a preliminary investigation study, or a study of certain properties within the 200 block of Raritan Avenue. In terms of agenda tonight, we would quickly go over the summary of basically, why are we doing this, as well as the overview and scope of the study, history, or overview to read on the statute, the study area context in terms of the background, as well as the related crux of the presentation, which is the evaluation of these seven properties, concluding with the conclusion of recommendations to what to do moving forward. So in terms of context, as indicated, the seven properties are in the 200 block, south side of Raritan Avenue. Zooming in, you'll see that they are a little bit scattered. Lots 1, 13, 19, 31, 37, 38, and 39, some of them are contiguous with each other. I'll explain why we chose those, why the Borough Council selected those properties for investigation, for potential expansion of the existing, we don't own area, that was established in 2005. So starting with the really summary, this really started over 20 years ago. 2003 is noted in master plan. They started to evaluate areas of the downtown that were potentially useful for redevelopment. And beginning in October 2004, I believe, and concluding in June 2005, the redevelopment destination was established for various properties in downtown areas. See on this map, this is from the 2005 redevelopment plan, showing which properties were designated as area needed redevelopment and incorporated into that plan called Downtown Redupplan Plan, was adopted in September of 2005. 2016, as we recall, this is really when LOK came on board, along with the borough administrator Terry Hovair. We engaged in a process with the Borough Council with the help of CME to prepare a study determining whether or not the entirety of the Borough qualifies as an area needed rehabilitation. And the ordinance was passed, adopting that destination such that the entire community is designated as area rehabilitation, as several other communities throughout the state have done, including nearby touching just three years ago. 2019, we did a master planning effort, including strategic update to the land use plan element, which really focused on a lot of matters, including several corridors, including the downtown corridor. And really, the theme of that was how we leverage redevelopment, recognizing the lack of activity in the downtown area, whether through redevelopment or just through infill development, that then past 10, 15 years. In 2021, this is really during the pandemic, we prepared a redevelopment plan that also did a scattered sites, best planned designation, really underneath, utilizing the rehab designation. And as you can see, again, more scattered sites, but at the time, it was more focused on properties that the Borough had some control over, or at the time, it's for Track D, for example, a logical location for a parking structure, or some sort of parking strategy that would benefit redevelopment of the other tracks. And many of these tracks were actually already in the 2005 designated properties, in the 2005 plan. So this is more of a focus approach in 2001, 2022. And when that plan was adopted, the Borough engaged in RFP process to select conditional redevelopers for various tracks. And here we are today, 2023, performing a study determining whether additional properties would qualify as area in need redevelopment, specific to Track C. And I'll get a little background as to why this particular study, this particular track, on these slides next. So just to give a little background illustration to what has happened since 2005, so part of a 20-plus year period in purple, with a light purple, you'll see relative to Track C, that's 200 block of Raritan Avenue, those are properties that are designated as area in need redevelopment in 2005. The hash area in the center are the properties that are included in 2021 redevelopment plans. And during the process of the RFP and for the conditional redevelopment selection, the thought of potentially expanding the redevelopment area, in the darker purple, was contemplated, and here we are today, with that presentation of its findings. So this, this gives context of why those properties were selected. As you recall on prior slide, why are they on the ends, why there nothing in the middle? That's because the properties in the middle already are an area needed rehabilitation and redevelopment, and this sort of fills out the block for various reasons. I'll get into the reasons why that was considered through the RFP process. So as part of that RFP process, which was put in the past couple of years, did want to state that the Borough issued the RFP with specific expectations for the redevelopment area of each track, so Tracks A through B in 2021 plan. As part of the RFP release, the Borough did allow respondents to propose development on adjacent properties outside of the designated areas. And for all to Track C, the Borough did select 232 Raritan Avenue LLC, other words, Garden Homes, as a conditional redeveloper. And their initial concept plan was presented to the Borough Council as redevelopment entity did include additional properties as anticipated and called for in, or allowed for in the RFP release. And the Borough also decided that it was in best interest of the community to consider the expanded portions, and in order to do that, in the best interest of potentially using the redevelopment powers under the redevelopment destination, as opposed to just a rehab destination, they did authorize a concept to expand the redevelopment area to potentially include the remainder of the block for something on Raritan Avenue, and to potentially facilitate better access to this potentially larger redevelopment area. At its meeting on February 21st, 2023, the Borough Council adopted Resolution Number 2-23-71, which authorized and directed the planning board to conduct a study. And I believe in June, this body, the planning board, did recognize the need for a licensed professional to prepare the study on behalf of the Borough. And this is the culmination of that report, reports on file. Hopefully, you read all 70 pages, otherwise posted online for public consumption. And this presentation is meant to give an overview of the findings. As of 2013, the state legislature has required that whenever you do a resolution for a study, have to indicate whether or not may use condemnation, you have to, or eminent domain, you have to declare it as a condemnation area for redevelopment study. Or the alternative is you're not going to use eminent domain, you need to declare it or title it as a non-condemnation area for redevelopment. This resolution that was adopted in February by council specifically called for non-condemnation area need redevelopment. It's just a technical matter. Regarding the scope of study, I think you've seen a couple of these presentations before, and we've done it several times in the past couple of years. I really try to use the same methodology of doing a really detailed report. That's part and due because recent case law, actually not recent case law, Galen versus Paul Spur, 2007, there was part of the findings of the court was that the, the study can't, should not be used in what's called a net opinion or view of the presentation. In other words, it shouldn't be a windshield study. I shouldn't be, you should not be relying on the planner to state, to simply restate the statute with a criteria and say, this property meets criteria and repeat it. There needs to be a standard level of care to actually investigate the property, report on its findings. And the process I use, I can conduct inventory of the properties through mapping, review the records, such as building permits, zoning permits, board approvals, police fire records, as well DPW and Health Department records, if they're available, review against the zoning maps, zoning ordinance and master plan. And then obviously, do the site inspections. In this case, I was not able to get into all the properties, in some cases, I should refuse access. So I was able to do some analysis of the physical conditions from the public right of way and through the permit records. And obviously, as part of that record finding and research, put into a report indicating my findings and make recommendations. And I tried to be transparent with the process, include a lot of photographs through why I made these findings and sent just a wall of texts saying, believe me, trust the government. So trying to use the photographs as a way to illustrate the findings that were defined appropriate. In terms of redevelopment statute, I'm trying to be brief with this, heard this presentation before regarding the purpose of the statute. Purpose of the local redevelopment housing law is that it's planning and financial tool that grants local governments, including its authorities, various redevelopment powers, including the ability to initiate a process that could transform underutilized or poorly designed properties with the principal goal of promoting the physical development most conducive to the social and economic improvement of the state and its municipalities. And as you've seen in the report, several advantages to doing a plan, you could have more flexibility in zoning, you could designate certain uses to be permitted and strip away uses in underlying zoning that are not appropriate for a specific area. You can do site-specific plans to target improvements. You can do detailed development design standards. Some plans don't do that, but in this case, we, we found that appropriate to require higher standard level care, which necessitates the need for detailed development and design standards, including opportunities for standards that promote or require, in this case, sustainability, universal design aspects, features that can be preserved, such as open spaces or built, even buildings in some cases. And of course, this is a unique way to engage in public private, public-private partnering, really PTP effort. It's been done in many cases in Highland Park. These are two projects that have been recently completed, going through, from designation to the plan making, site plan approval, instruction, and final COs. So these are two, 31 River Road, which is the Frederick 40-unit apartment building adjacent to a residential neighborhood consisting mostly single-family homes. Design standards were selected to ensure that the buildings didn't, were compatible with the single-family homes across the street. And with regards to 137, 139 Raritan Avenue, taking a one-story building, no parking on site, having off-site parking requirements and promoting a mixed-use building. In this case, there were several plan amendments, starting in, I believe, 2017, that started to really unravel some development potential on the property, including the ability to put apartments on the ground floor, in this case, in the rear of the building, which is appropriate for the site, as well as locating off-site parking within 1,000 feet of the site. You know, this is actually a bad photo, I want to update it for future reports. The Greek markets have done a great job as a new tenant in that building. And of course, you look even better when two street trees go in front of the property. Oops, wrong computer. With regards to the redevelopment process, I'm not going to bore you with all the details, but it's a very detailed process for the investigation, as well as upon designation of every own area, the preparation of a redevelopment plan. We are really on step four on the left side, where we have the public hearing on the findings. Gone through this process many, many times, just within the past few years. Statutory requirements for investigation. So they're pretty detailed, and there's been recent case law that sort of restricts or narrows the focus of how you can make a finding of a property to meet the criteria. And to be clear, if a piece of property does not need to meet all the statutory criteria, does not need to meet A through H, must qualify, it only needs to meet one of them, other than H. So as long as it meets one of the, the top seven criteria, then it'd be deemed area needed redevelopment. And further to that point, the, should note that for purposes of the redevelopment law, it does not need to include properties that in itself qualifies to need redevelopment. Or specifically, it's noted that the local redevelopment law does not require all properties located within a delineated area to be in need of redevelopment, but rather that a maturity or generality of properties meet the criteria for determination. In fact, if you look at the definition of a redevelopment area in the statute, it is defined as a redevelopment area that may include lands, buildings, or improvements, which of themselves are not detrimental to the public health, safety, welfare, but the inclusion of which is found necessary with or without change in their condition for the effective redevelopment of the area in which they are part. Recall the section three criteria, because section three is where the definition sections is statute. And further to that point, the Redevelopment Handbook, second edition, I believe they're working on third edition, states that the, we reiterate that this section allows for the inclusion of properties that do not meet statutory criteria, but are essential to be included in the destination to effectively redevelop the area. Examples of this includes providing better access to the property, simple things that even just infrastructure or utilities could be a viable use of it, as well as property that could be determined to be critical to the area's successful redevelopment. So the common theme we use for using section three criteria are access, whether that's pedestrian in particular, as well as sometimes a squaring off in the area, which might lead to a better building form. So going back to the study area map, in terms of the context, taking together these properties, put them all together, less than one acre of land. In most cases, the land value exceeds the improvement value in terms of the tax assessment. Really doesn't mean anything of the terms of the criteria, but it does predict, it may predict that those properties are ripe for redevelopment. There are really two sites of interest on the New Jersey Environmental Management System as contained in the report. One, as you both pertained to site remediation efforts on 248 Raritan Avenue, as well as 24th St. Raritan Avenue. Otherwise, in this area, there are no wetlands, there's no high-risk flood hazard areas, and the properties are serviced by P S and G for gas electric, and are, they are located within a super service area. Soil type is pretty shallow with somewhat dense, excessively drained soils. This is for background purposes, I really have to do with the statutory requirements, but goes shows that these properties are not affected by environmental conditions other than those properties already remediated. In terms of land use, the study area, really the whole block for that matter, is buried in use. Office uses in orange, the green is for the community use, the light blue is the reform church, red retail and service businesses, the really, really light yellow are single-family residential uses. As I get into the, into the presentation, and it's just really through the report, you'll notice that called out that a lot of the properties in terms of land use do not conform to the underlying zoning, and several lots are not conforming with respect to lot area, with lot depth, as well as the use. Terms of the master plan, the, as we call in 2019, there's several focus areas, including the downtown area. One common phrase we use often is that the online survey indicated that only 9% wanted to see the downtown area for me seeing. The vision statement that we use for this particular corridor, the downtown area, was that it was imperative to leverage reinvestment, revitalization, infill, and redevelopment to expand opportunities for mixed-use development and support a walkable community with a vibrant, thriving downtown that recognizes the challenges of the heat commerce era. Among the feedback receiving, received about the downtown area, they wanted, many comments focused on creating mixed-use development for higher density housing, address a high number of vacant properties, empty storefronts, high turnover of businesses that make the streetscape unpleasant, and they presented a sense of neglect. There was a sense of a lack of proper mix and diversity of retail activities, and there were too many exposed parking lots that create gaps into the street street. As part of that effort of analyzing, would be appropriate that a series of strategies were established in a downtown area, including custom tailor infill redevelopment planning, expand the variety of active ground floor uses, expand the downtown resident customer base, and encourage really any level of upgrade and investment. So that was sort of overview of why we're doing this and how we got to where we are. So we're potentially expanding redevelopment area that was already designated in 2004 with this study, so that we could potentially improve access and potential building form with the additional lots. To be clear, a redevelopment plan can still be created under the rehab destination using any lots, really the entire block, if the Borough would so choose. But it was determined, as I indicated earlier, that it was in best interest to expand the study, that way the property is a part of the future project, or amended redevelopment plan will be all under the redevelopment statute. It is, in a way, it's easier to do a redevelopment plan if everything's all under the same designation. Otherwise, there are some properties in rehab destination, some properties in redevelopment destination, the financial agreements get kind of, it's, it's difficult to maneuver around those splits. So the Borough is going to be effort to determine whether it's appropriate that these properties be expanded into a larger redevelopment area. So I'm going to start on the bottom right corner and work my way clockwise. So I'm going to start with block 2202, lot 1, this is 202 Raritan Avenue, it's at the northwest corner of the block. Lot 1 is a non-conforming lot with respect to lot area depth, and presently contains not conforming use, because offices aren't committed in the ground floor, on the ground floor in the CBD zone, so any obligation requires a use variance. Properties in the corner lot, undersized conditions, contains a two-and-a-half story framed building. It was obviously initially constructed as residence and was eventually converted to an office use. This building has a nice front porch, wraparound, accessible ran to a rear parking area. When I did my record search, it's found that it was subject to two board applications, 1980, 1994. In 1980, permission was sought from the zoning board to maintain a driveway that was built without permits. And I think at that time, you do something, you ask for forgiveness later, the board granted approval to maintain that driveway, despite the fact that driveway is too close to the street intersection, does not meet code. In 1994, the property receives site plan approval to convert the residence into a office use with an undetermined second floor use. Select the freestanding sign in the front yard, received several variances mainly because the CBD zone does not permit freestanding signs.
Chris, I'm going to interrupt you here for just a moment.
Sure.
You've described this as non-conforming. That means it doesn't comply with the existing ordinance.
Correct.
Is it conforming to the variances?
Unless you understand the question.
Well, when you get a variance.
Yes.
In some sense, for you, the ordinance has changed. You know, you have a different set of standards than in the ordinance. This, your, your report says this has gotten, got approvals with variances. I think the approval you're describing is the, is, is the use you're describing is the use for which it got site plan approval with variances. Is it in conformity with those variances?
The site plan approval included. Go back to my history. So they receive variances, convert the existing residence to retail office use, including autometry sales. So it's conforming to the approval.
Okay, so, so it's not really non-conforming. It's conforming to the standards that were established in the, in the variances.
By the standards with the board, but any expansion, really any change.
Sure, they, they, they might need to come in for further variance, but in its present form, it's not really non-conforming. It's, it's conforming to, to, to the, to the, the, the standards to which it is subject.
Yes, they receive approval to deviate from the standards.
Sure.
On review of other various records, permits were regularly issued from the 1980s to the 2000s, including area sign permits for changes, not to see replacement of the roof, repair of the walkway. However, there's only been one permit issued in the last 25 years relative to electrical and plumbing, indicating that there may be deferred maintenance projects within the building. There have been a few police and fire calls, but they mainly were related to fire alarms. So that's the overview on the properties, and to give a little feedback on the conditions I found at the site. So we'll start with the parking area design. So the present layout of the parking area is not conforming with respect to the zoning ordinance, although it did receive approval at the time in 1980 to maintain it. It is frankly still in a condition that's obsolete in terms of site plan best practices. Parking area lacks vehicular, properly, properly designed vehicular access for ingress and egress. The defined parking spaces are not appropriate. The accommodations for accessible parking are basically nonexistent, and the potential amenities and buffering are also not to code. The driveway that provides access to the rear yard is a very narrow, and it's located in front yard, and it's and it's, it's narrow and blocked by buffer landscaping, such that when you drive one way out of the parking lot towards the street, first of all, you're very close to the intersection. There's a reason why there's a setback requirement from street intersections. It's a tight turning radius, it tightly wraps around the building, and it's shielded by a very tall trebary, which is a violation of the clear sight triangle and makes it difficult for vehicles to simultaneously enter and exit the site at the same time and creates conflict with pedestrians on the side. Frankly, it's a, it's a condition that's dangerous. And as with recent case law this year, if a planner or the board to assert that we have certain criteria, an example, this is example criteria D, recent case law from this year indicates that you can't just make a finding of the belief that is, has an improper layout, faulty arrangement or design, but it also needs to show harm. In this case, I believe this layout is harmful to the community because of the violations of the clear sight triangle, the inability for two cars to traverse the site at the same time. If this was still a house, this would be appropriate. You're not going to get the same amount of traffic back and forth, but this is a office use that has appointments only, and you can have conflicts of people coming in and out at the same time. And you have the upper floor office use as well. So there's a lot of in and out of the space and it could potentially be a hazard to pedestrians and people utilizing the parking spaces. We also note that the parking area lacks adequate space to back out. It's simply a square. There's really no room to maneuver. So they're banging into the site and onto other properties, causing damage. The parking lot also lacks accessible ADA parking space. There was one approved through that site plan application in 1994, but if you go to the site now, it's no longer there. There's no signage. The striping is not there for the access aisle, and there's no striping for the space at all. And the buffering is nonexistent, nonexistent. It's just a fence should be at least with several feet providing buffering. The wheel stops are disjointed and the all these conditions really show that there's insufficient space to really maneuver around the site. And these conditions, in my opinion, result in driver confusion, contribute to circulation patterns unsafe for motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians. The parking area itself shows significant signs of deterioration. As you see, there's piles of holes and there is some settlement depressions which contribute to pounding, the freeze law slipping hazards, and unimproved edge conditions allow for loose asphalt and trash to really accumulate throughout the perimeter of the site. Regarding ADA access to the building, parking area has sunk in a bit such that the, you know, you need more than a quarter inch, almost a half inch to step into the sidewalk. And the, just like the concrete walkway lacks pollards for the first several feet. So you're sort of in no man's land on that sidewalk as cars are whipping around the corner and you're taking the wheelchair tightly to the right side of the building. With regards to solid waste recycling, there's a lack of designated space. And as there's no trash enclosure, which is otherwise required for non-residential buildings. The building exterior is generally in fair condition, beginning to show signs of a deterioration, water damage. So regarding the exterior of the building showing signs of deterioration, the porch railing is missing, paths raised to fall through. apparent water damage and moderate deterioration in several parts of the side, including underneath the bay windows and the foundation of the building. The building interior is actually fairly good condition with respect to the first and second floor, especially the second floor. Great, nice space, very clean, no obvious problems. And, but in the basement, there's a fair amount of clutter and some deterioration of the soft peeling paint, water stains, and possibility of overgrowth in various areas. So while the exterior of the building has conditions which are frankly fixable and the interior is in very good condition, I find that the combination of a faulty arrangement and design of the parking area to be detrimental to the safety, health, morals, and welfare of the community in accordance with criteria D of the local redevelopment housing law. And additionally, because of, well, the property qualifies under D, you can utilize criteria H, which is a smart growth statute. With regards to the next property, this is the property next door on South Second Avenue, block 2202, lot 31, 11 South Second Avenue. This property is a conforming lot, but presently contains a non-conforming use because single-family dwelling is not permitted use in the CBD zone. Property is a mid-block lot adjacent to the corner lot and presently contains a one-and-a-half story, three-bedroom dwelling. It's managed by the Reform Church of Holland Park as an affordable unit for special needs, as noted in the housing element fair share plan. Records show that consistent with the timing of the conversion of that dwelling to an affordable unit in 2007, eight, various permits were issued for the amount of equipment and interior renovation. They actually took a second floor bedroom and split it into two smaller rooms and they replaced all the wiring in the building. However, no permits were issued since that time. From 2018, 2023, representing a five-year period, there have been 30 police and fire calls. However, I noted that not all calls may be associated with incidents on the property itself because police records include traffic incidents in front of the property. So when I disregard those units, the half of them, we found that there were various calls associated with ambulance calls, behavioral mental health crisis, civil matters disputes, harassing, and several welfare checks and really four incidents of that. Regarding the property itself, so the rear yard area does not really have full use to property. That is the the tenant of the house doesn't have full use to the property, it's more accurate way of saying. A portion of the rear yards is fenced off and serves as a playground area that's managed by the church, including a all play area. Really nothing wrong with that. The solid waste recycling is lacking because you see the trash cans sort of left out in the open. At least at the time of inspection, when I went back the second time, it was happening, front yard area again. That, but I wouldn't call that as the condition of warrants, the immediate criteria. The building exterior is actually generally pretty good condition as with the case with the conversion in 2008, publication, renovations to the interior exterior done. There was some overgrowth of paint chipping, but nothing substantial. There were some missing and broken slats relative to the window system on the front porch and the front stairway lacks the landing. And seem to be in a condition that wasn't disrepair as when you step on it, it's sagging and rupturing. The building interior is generally in fair condition, somewhat limited circulation as always, and the stairways are very narrow. It's a, it's a old hole. There's also limited space between, as you see in the photo, between the range and the kitchen, sort of obsolete layout. And there's really no space for the refrigerator as located in a dining room instead. And there was at least one outlet being used, really being daisy chained to power other appliances, smaller appliances. There was also a couple outlets exposed without protective cover, but that can be easily fixed by simply putting a cover on. With regards to second floor, the minor, the bathroom had some deterioration because it was leaking. And as you saw, see in the kitchen below it, there's the water damage causing the big giant hole in the ceiling and water damage on the floor. But when I was there with the manager of the building, they're in the process of repairing those damages. And it's really for those reasons that I found that while there are various security conditions around the property, it does not appear to rise to the level of needed criteria. A, for example. However, as my opinion, the property does qualify as a non-complimentary area development under the section three criteria as we discussed before. The, recall the definition may include properties that are not of themselves detrimental to health and safety, but may be useful for an effective development of a redevelopment area. In this case, given the property's proximity to South Second Avenue and adjacent to the, well, the corner lot that's been designated, well, I feel is meets criteria D. This, including the property into the already designated property redevelopment area, will allow for appropriate access point from South Second. As of right now, the current redevelopment area only has access from Egnolia. So you can imagine if future redevelopment had only one access point from Egnolia, which is mostly residential street, a lot more traffic generation is, there's a need to consider a secondary access point, and that includes both vehicular and pedestrian movements throughout the block. This additional access point would relieve pressure from that only access point and providing additional access point other than Raritan Avenue further really promotes the goals and objectives of master plan. If the other option is just put a couple driveways in Raritan Avenue, I think we all agree that's not an option. So we need to look at options where can we get access to these redevelopment areas from the side streets and not rely solely on existing Egnolia street. So combining lot 31 with lot one also encourages for a design element that could be incorporated to a larger redevelopment area. Because if you only included lot one, it's a very narrow lot and it's difficult to use a building form with appropriate parking behind it. So when you combine lot, this lot with lot one, it's appropriate to expand redevelopment area to South Second Avenue, basically squaring off that access point. So I'm going to move on to the third lot. This is block 2202, lot 37, also known as 242 Raritan Avenue. This is a two-story building with a two-and-a-half story home behind it. It's a mixed-use property. Excuse me. The lot 37 is not conforming with respect to lot area and lot width and presently contains a non-conforming use since apartments are not permitted on the ground floor in the CBD zone. So part of this is residential use in the back of building on ground floor. The property is a mid-block lot on the other side of the corner that we were just referring to, lots one and 31. It contains a two-story building in front of a two-and-a-half story framed dwelling, doesn't have a driveway, doesn't have a garage, all parking is off-site. The rear yard area is actually very well maintained. It contains a fenced-in pool area, at least observed from the neighborhood. This is the property that was refused access, so I was not able to get into the building or even contact the site. So almost all the photos you can see are from the public right-of-way or, you know, looking from another property where I was given access to. With regards to the use, as you see, it's lot NB is on the ground floor, actually a very attractive storefront, especially one of the nicest storefronts in town. The second floor does not have windows, which is an odd condition, does not meet the design standards of the borough. And as you could, as I described in the report, that multiple building typology, that's pretty common. Holland Park, we have a commercial building in front of a house. This is one of those situations. And it's really indicative of the early development of Raritan Avenue. In the case of this slot, the single-family dwelling was retained and converted to two apartments, one's on the ground floor, which is not conforming, as well as another apartment on the second floor. And it's a two-story building up front with the commercial use on the ground floor and another apartment on the second floor. When I reviewed the records, there is, permits were regularly issued in 1970s and 80s. However, there's been a number of concerns raised by hazardous conditions from 1989 to mid 90s, which more or less has been addressed. Since that time, permits have been issued pretty regularly for renovations, including for slot NB back in 2000, meaning slot NB's been here for over 20 years. There's other improvements in 2008 as well as 2014, and however, there does not appear any mechanical permits since the late 1990s. Over a five-year period, review of the police and fire records, there've been 24 police and fire calls, although half of them are related to a traffic. With regards to the property, as I indicated, I could not get into the property, but I noticed that the rear yard area really serves the residential use. That's the former home being converted to a the rear yard areas in good condition, there's a program pool, and while the gate and fence systems around the pool was not self-closing, self-lashing, which would be a violation of both zoning and construction codes, it is noted that the ladder flips up so that prevents children who are unsupervised from wanting entry into the pool. Typically doesn't take concern, especially if the gates wide open, so kids can walk from the street into the property. A little bit of concern for this, the gate has to be closed manually. Otherwise, the building exterior is actually in pretty good condition, particularly the storefront as discussed, and there's no access to interior. Given that with the lack of information, I did not find that this property met the criteria. However, it is directly adjacent to the 2004 designated area and is also adjacent to, on the other side of the building, on the left side, of properties yet to be discussed on this presentation, but that were found to be an area need redevelopment for different reasons. And it would behoove the borough not to consider this spot as area need of redevelopment under the section three criteria because if you don't interpret this property as area need, you'll have a basically a donut hole between the 2004 designated properties as well as to be determined properties on the other side. So it's for that reason that felt there's appropriate that the property be considered for redevelopment under the section three criteria because the property in itself does not meet the criteria, but it would be appropriate to merge it as part of a larger redevelopment area. So moving on to the next property, this is at the corner lot. Tax records indicates block 2202, lot 38, also known as 246 Raritan Avenue, but that's your three properties, well, three businesses associated with the site. 246 Raritan Avenue is the former make me take me space, 248 Raritan Avenue is a k- k- t restaurant space, and then on Side Street on South Third, I believe number eight, according to my records. Yes, 8th South Third Avenue is the Holland Park tax business, which is a normal space. So lot 30 is not conforming with respect to lot area and lot width, again, another not conforming lot with respect to the size. And it contains a non-conforming use, given that offices are not permitted on the ground floor in the CBD zone. That's specific to the Holland Park tax business. Property is one of the lots located on the south side of Raritan Avenue, Route 27, and the west side of South Third, really where the town tables was. The property presently contains a one-story amusement building split into three storefronts and yes, so there was a small parking lot driveway on the rear of the building and successful on the side street. There were several street trees, which both of which sort of are within the Raritan Avenue, South Third, public rights of way, and the property directly butts that portion of the, as I indicated, the town tables, which was critical during the COVID-19 pandemic. The building contains three storefronts, and I already discussed it to you, some of us skipped to the record summary. So the permits have been regularly issued for the last 50 years for these properties. It's been oil tank removals as well as installation. The chemical equipment has replaced in a timely manner. 1980, major renovation project for the corner protectionary, the corner store, through the side renovations and streetscape improvements. It's a relatively good-looking building. 1997, the Trino Guest included renovations as part of the side grant program. And review of the police fire records call show that only three minor incidents on the property. As far as the conditions on the property, you'll note that there's, while there's no off-street parking area, there is a small curb cut that allows for access to this apparent shared driveway between this property and the property to the south. And what happens because of that curb cut is cars often park in the public right-of-way, blocking the sidewalk, and you can tell, not only that not permitted, but also because of the overgrowth of the plantings on either side, there's no, there's a violation of clear sight triangle when you're trying to use that for vehicular parking. And this creates a dangerous conditions for pedestrians on the sidewalk as well as motorists in the street. Therefore, the driveway really knows its longer functions as such, and the curb cut remains, which so this invites this condition, which I observed on more than one occasion. An additional, they as well note that these conditions may result, as I indicated earlier, similarly that it results in driver confusion and contributes to a circulation pattern that is unsafe and dangerous. With regards to solid waste recycling, it's a bunch of cans all lined up without a dumpster. So while there is a dedicated space, there's no enclosure provided, which again is common for non-residential users, both in terms of pest management practices, that's what else is important. There's several barrels that are disarrayed, water situated on top of standing water, which may create breeding grounds, mosquitoes. Additionally, the stairway, as you can see against the building, while the attractive chain link fence, if you look into it, being used in the dust, the oil tank thrown at the bottom, and at the bottom, there appear to be various trash, litter, debris, and a water heater again. And there also appear to be running water at the bottom, which was concerning, which is deteriorating the sidewalk condition. And at the bottom of the stairway, and there's pest management issues and department damage and other hazards related to that. With regard to the exterior of the building, meaning the first facade, you'll note that they're generally in poor and fair condition, showing moderate deficiencies, including horizontal and vertical displacement. The brick in several cases bulging out, and in certain cases, it's been patched incorrectly. Uh, the brick, in several cases, bulging out, and in certain cases, it's been patched incorrectly. Uh, and however, several portions remain in state of disrepair, uh, which would require significant reconstruction. Uh, there's significant waters stained throughout the brick facade, uh, particularly at the top and the metal coping system, uh, which does not appear to be properly fastened to the, uh, wall system, there's missing flashing and other mechanical elements missing, which keeps it open. So there's infiltration of water going into the coping and pest management issues. Uh, with regard, and also didn't know that there's at least one broken window in a storefront system, which is related to the Holland Park Taxi Business. And regarding the building interior, the building really varied from fair to good condition. Obviously, the space on uh, related to make-me-take-me is in a condition where it's pending, uh, renovation work. The corner store appeared to be in very good condition, however, there's really no access to the back of house areas. I didn't have opportunity to see with the kitchen. Uh, with regard to the office spaces, some clutter and really poor circulation inside the space, and I found a mattress in one of the office spaces against the storefront window, which is not a conforming condition, presence of violation. Uh, with regard to the basement, found significant amount of food, uh, storage areas in the basement, which is concerning, especially when you have the running water and the uh, trash conditions at the bottom of the stairwell, and there was a poor circulation throughout the basement between the three spaces. So it's, it's for these reasons I find that the property is substandard, unsafe, obsolescent, uh, and, and really leads to conducive to unwholesome living or working, in this case, working conditions in accordance with criteria A. And with the combination of the dilapidated condition for to the brick facade, uh, broken windows and to the driveway condition especially, I find that this is the faulty arrangement design and is detrimental to the welfare of the community in accordance with criteria D. And because it meets those two, also meets criteria H for smart. Property number four. Lot twenty-two oh two, lot thirty-nine, ten South Third Avenue. This is the, uh, speak music conservatory building with apartment on the second floor. Uh, lot thirty-nine is, but not performing a lot with respect to lot area and lot depth, uh, but does permit permitted uses in the CBD zone. It's a mid-blocked lot and presently contains a two-story building with the apartment and the ground floor office space. Uh, records search show that in nineteen ninety-three, now occasions of planning board, this body approved a waiver of site plan for a change of use from travel A to C. This is a psychologist's office, and it's since then, there've been various permits issued for major renovation work in nineteen eighty-five, nineteen ninety-three, two thousand ten, two thousand fourteen. So the permits regularly issued for the past few years and police and fire calls only showed three minor incidents. Uh, with regards to the conditions of the property, I was able to get inside the first floor space, but was asked not to take photographs. So I did not take any photographs of the interior, focused on the exterior, and I did not get access to the, uh, second floor apartment. The parking area design, similar to other conditions, uh, as you can see, the layout is not conforming with respect to zoning ordinance and frankly, best management practices and proper design. Uh, the parking area lacks how to be designed to have your ingress egress. In this case, you just have four parking spaces directly across from the street. So in order to back out of the parking lot, you have to go into the street. Uh, which is a dangerous condition for pedestrians, especially when you can't see spaces next to each other, there are blind spots and it has overgrowth on the left side, which is a violation of the clear sight triangle. Uh, so it's a dangerous condition for vehicles maneuvering in and out of spaces, uh, which again require backing out into the public sidewalk and street. Uh, additionally, there is a vehicle parked in one of the parking spaces directly adjacent to the public sidewalk. Uh, this would, again, be, uh, show that parking is hampered by poor visibility, creates another potential unsafe conditions for passing by by sidewalk. Uh, in this condition, the parking space is directly next to the building itself, creates a sight triangle issue. If those parking spaces were removed, you might be able to eliminate the sight triangle issue, but that means losing parking spaces and requires site plan to do so. So that this property in a way is sort of hamstrung by the site plan, because it's required to have parking, but the parking layout is simply dangerous. Uh, additionally, uh, let's see, one of the parking spaces is marked as accessible. However, there's no striping, there's no way for wheel, someone in wheelchair to get in and out of space unless they go into a space that hopefully doesn't have a car on the left side. And on the right side, there are trash cans, you know, like. So there's no way for someone to get in and out of a car, they need a wheelchair, so it's not compliant with ADA standards. Um, the parking area also, just like on lot one, lacks sufficient buffering around all sides. And the protective measures between the parking area and the building, such as bollards, like you would think that it is close to the building could be bollards and not protected building. Um, but that, those conditions, uh, all these conditions taken together, uh, result in driver confusion and contribute to a pattern that's unsafe for motorists, bicycles, and pedestrians. With regards to the solid waste, as you can see, again, recycling, there's no trash enclosure provided, it's just laid against the building directly visible from the street. It's appropriate, uh, you can see sometimes that the damage is better, which is causing infiltration problems into the foundation at that corner. Uh, the building exterior otherwise is actually pretty good condition, there's no major deficiencies down unlike the other building. Uh, I did not observe any deferred maintenance projects and the, other than minor staining on the brick side. Uh, with regards to the building interior, uh, as I said, as you did on the first floor, it's a speak music conservatory, that's a very good condition, but the basement did observe. Uh, unfortunately, I can't show the photographs because there weren't any. Uh, there was some water damage in the basement, especially at the corners, which is unusual, uh, but there did appear to be some mold. Or at least a history or presence of mold that made that condition. So with respect to mainly the parking layout design, a finite property and multi-region design, obviously, and is detrimental to the welfare of the community in accordance with criteria E. Second to last. This is a unique property. Uh, block twenty-two oh two, lot thirteen, twenty-four, South Third Avenue. It is a conforming lot, but presently contains non-conforming uses, given that daycare centers are not permitted use in the PO zone, and apartments are not permitted to be on the ground floor in a PO zone. In this case, the building up front is a converted residence into, in, in the confines, uh, daycare, probably seen the name on it. Um, and it contains a four-family, oh, four-apartment use at the back of the building, as well as a small playground and a stone ground block. The uh, records search shows that in nineteen ninety-five, an occupation for site plans approved to convert the house into a daycare center for a yellow brick road, which has since moved across the street. Uh, resolution indicates that existing property contained a single-family house and a two-story four-family dwelling. Uh, it was noted that there was no access between the two buildings, so the current daycare does not speak to the four-family, they are separated, uh, so they have their own points of access. Uh, and upon various records, the number of issued, uh, permits issued nineteen ninety-six, two thousand seven, and recently twenty-two. Uh, where we didn't know that there's a lack of logical plumbing permits associated with the apartments in the past twenty-five years. Given four units, you would expect to be some repairs done or permits needed, uh, typically every ten continues for each unit. Uh, so this may indicate that there was deferred means. I was not able to get into the building, uh, despite people, I was able to utilize and peruse the outside property. Uh, with regards to the driveway and parking area, the driveway is along the west side of the property, has access to the rear yard, which is appropriate. It's actually one of the rare cases where the parking area is in an appropriate location. Uh, however, the driveway is encumbered by a stairway that provides access to the four families, so if you step down from the four apartments onto a landing, which by the way doesn't exist, you're standing in the middle of a trailer. Represents a very dangerous condition. Uh, there's no walkway from the public sidewalk to the residence, which I, I think in downtown conditions, that's not unusual, you sometimes walk down a gravel driveway to a unit. Uh, that's not unusual, but the fact that the entry landing butts, uh, actually juts into the driveway, that represents a dangerous condition. Uh, the present layout, parking area in the rear is generally conforming, but does not appear to have been contained for several years. The wheel stops that were on the property have shifted and something to the ground, so the hallmarks serve their purpose. Uh, the delineation between the edge of the parking area and the fence, that's really whether where away, uh, which results in, um, the fencing, and it just probably no longer had that protective measure, so cars hit the fence, they're in the neighbor's yard. Uh, adjacent to the accessible parking space is a playground area for the daycare center, enclosed by a five-to-all chain link fence. Uh, this fence because of tight ambrosia facility, pockets of clear sight triangle, and that also creates a dangerous condition uh, for residents and employees walking in the driveway and parking area. Uh, and similar to the others, with respect to driveway and parking lot design, I find that these conditions result in driver confusion and contribute to a circulation pattern that's unsafe for residents, motorists, and pedestrians. See, so with regards to the driveway and parking area conditions, uh, the driveway paid portion shows significant signs of deterioration, there's pressure settling. Uh, pressure leading to slipping hazard, mosquito breeding, pest management issues, cracked, broken, missing pavement. Uh, additionally, portions of the driveway slopes towards the building, so you can see there's water damage visible from at the bottom of the building, the ground level, in, as well as into the ground of apartments. This allows for water and debris to accumulate at various corners of the building and then cause damage to the foundation. Uh, finally, the root systems of the trees are dislodging parts of the driveway, which allows a loose asphalt debris to collect various parts of the base of the building. The accessory structure in the rear lot and apparent outdoor storage area, both of which take place of, of parking spaces, which may not be permitted. Uh, and it's noted in the report that this may be a violation of the site line rule and apartment warrants. Uh, in addition, the ground floor support of the accessory structure is a severe disrepair. More unlikely, uh, pest management issues associated with the exposed foundation. Solid waste recycling is lacking, does not exist. Uh, with regard to the building exterior, it does show signs of deterioration, uh, really in a minor to moderate scale. Uh, mainly on the sides of the two-and-a-half-story frame building, uh, and throughout the two-story block. As far as the house, you can see the scowl siding is in state of disrepair, the fascia, soffit, and wood shitters are show significant water damage and wood rot, there are branches and debris that are not getting cleared from the roof. And as for the two-story building, uh, the bottom building in the rear, various portions, including the support columns in the face of the second level balconies, except paint chipping and water damage. Uh, the second floor soffits start to sink, and this separation may cause for water infiltration deeper into the building, it may further exacerbate the issues with that we are in the facade. Uh, and additionally, the stairway that provides access to the second level apartment is actually blocked by various windows, uh, which is not a, uh, danger. It may represent substandard condition. And as indicated, as I looked at it inside. Notwithstanding that, due to the substandard conditions of the access into the building, meaning the stairwell, uh, I find that this, um, conducive to unwholesome living environment, criteria A, and the faulty original design of the landing parking area and lack protective measures are maybe present a dangerous condition for motorists who live on the driveway as well as for residents who live off-site. Finally, so end with the house, two twenty-five Magnolia Street, lot number nineteen, lot twenty-two oh two. I was permitted access onto the lot, but not inside the building, so, and I also did not, out of respect to the property owners, I did not take pictures of the exterior of the lot, just, uh, from the front of the building, which as you can see is quite lovely and maintained in good condition. So lot nineteen is a conforming lot and contains a conforming use, is rare, as you can tell in this, uh, safe family. Dwelling's are committed in the right zone. Property is mid-blocked lot and located on the north side of Magnolia Street and directly adjacent to a stub entry into the borough-owned, um, uh, farmers market block. We have a couple of comments on the video. So when I reviewed the record summary of building permits and whatnot, various permits been issued over the past thirty years, so it's clear that, uh, property is well-maintained. And I did not observe, we'll go back, this is one slide. Building interior, uh, exterior was well-maintained with lush landscaping, uh, did not find anything that suggested it's probably qualified to area need. Uh, however, I did note that with regards to the proximity of the site next to the stub entry to the rear of the existing redevelopment area, which provides access to the reform church. It may be appropriate to include this lot into the redevelopment area because the current stub street is about fifty feet wide. And the tenant designed to have a drive aisle twenty-four feet, parking spaces eighteen feet, and appropriate buffers pursuant to the ordinance, about five or ten feet wide. The lot that provides access to the rear reform church is insufficient. So you have these conditions with the driveways too narrow, you have the fence right against the parking area, this is damaged, cars hitting with, the buffer is not sufficient, wheel stops moving. So this property, it would be beneficial to include this property to improve access into the rear of the reform church lot. This is part of the redevelopment here in two thousand four. Namely because with additional lot width, it can prove access into the site, uh, wider driveway entry, appropriate twenty-four-foot dimension, parking on both sides, and the appropriate buffers to residences on either side of it. And that, in a sense, finally represents its conclusion of my investigation. As a summary, we found three properties that did not, did not meet the criteria. But utilizing the section three criteria, find that they will be appropriate for providing additional access from the side street. And that's a condition that's unusual. The borough, when it did the two thousand five plan, you can see that notwithstanding the redevelopment plan concept at the time, see with the blue line heading towards South Third, there was at a time where the borough was contemplating access to the side street. Now, with the two thousand twenty-one plan, uh, was focused on a narrow focus of this plan area with more refined plan approach. The, I think you can make reasonable assertions, and it's my opinion, that it would be more appropriate to get access from South Second through lot thirty-one for more squared-off portions of the redevelopment area. But the, in two thousand five, the borough had contemplated access from, where we go back, I'm going back, sorry. The borough had contemplated access from South Third, and that may still be viable across the two lots, which is lot thirty-seven and lot thirty-eight, which is part of our study for tonight. Uh, however, it may be more appropriate, given that the borough is pursuing a town tables permanent closure, that that access not be vehicular, perhaps pedestrian, and the same thing could be gained from lot thirteen as well. And of course, lot nineteen would be appropriate for a more appropriate entry and more parking, because I think as we discovered during the, uh, planning process, more parking is needed for a church. And I think whatever plan that we do incorporates a parking approach that satisfies the church as well as hub and parking for the retail establishments on this block. So there's a variety of reasons why the section three criteria would be appropriate for those. And I will say, I, I think we had this discussion when the planning board was contemplating, why are we doing this? Why are we expanding this? So, and then the reason given was that it may contribute to more, better access to redevelopment area. There is certainly a conundrum with the redevelopment statute, where you have that sort of cart before the horse. In this case, as you know, the process is due to designation first, as a meeting criteria, and then you can do the plan. But the section three criteria says you could include lands that don't qualify as an area need in redevelopment on its own. But may be useful for the redevelopment of the area. So the question asked is, well, what's the plan look like? Why do we need it? In a way, that's the challenge that us planners have, is sort of have to go, I'll call it a leap of faith, but in this case, we do have a redevelopment plan from two thousand five, which contemplates access from side streets. And we have a concept plan that, which I can share, is that the concept plan is per the RFP, does consider additional properties. So with those two concepts in mind, both in two thousand five, contemplating additional access, even if it's just pedestrian. And with the concept of the, that was filed for the RFP response, it is appropriate to consider additional properties, even though you don't see the plan in front of you. Uh, so again, that's a challenge that I have to convince the board, why you need those lots, you know, you don't have a plan in mind. Um, but based on the proximity of the existing designated area on South Second, it is appropriate to get that side street access vehicular, it will prove access to your rear uh, for the entire lot without having to rely solely on real lot. And frankly, I, I can see, uh, given the potential closure of South Third, that would be appropriate for not for vehicular access, because you don't want, yeah, you don't want cars there, so it would be appropriate for potentially pedestrian access, and which provide pedestrian access and to some degree vehicular access across the site without having to rely only on Magnolia. Which would be a benefit to the community, especially the residential neighbors there, as well as to not be forced to putting driveways back. Which would be a benefit to the community, especially the residential neighbors there, as well as to not be forced to putting driveways back in. Broward and Avenue, which as from the master plan, that's a goal not to permit, in fact, we're trying to close driveways. It will be complete one eighty if we decided, oh, well, we need a second access point, let's go through Broward now, that's not annotated. So that concludes my presentation. And welcome questions.
Okay, Chris, does anyone have a need to take a break or anything like that before we go on to the questions? Just. If not, we'll just, I'll write into it, I'll just start with a few short ones, two short ones. Basically. The impact be of this designation, non-combination designation to property owners, existing property owners. Especially those that maybe don't want to develop their property or sell their property. And that's one question, the second was, does fire access have anything to do, because I found the, oh, salon envy. Saying even though it's conforming, it just scares me that, you know, how do you get back to that apartment building behind there with any sort of vehicle? So those, that were, those were my two questions, thank you.
Yeah, so I'll start with the first one, so in the case of a non-combination area redevelopment, that does not permit the borough to utilize eminent domain to take property. And I think it's pretty clear that we're trying to engage in a process where, when, even when the property is designated as area needed redevelopment. As part of the redevelopment plan, although you can still do a plan and involve that property, but in the end, the selected redevelopment. Has to engage in arms length agreements for the property, boroughs not forcing that on the current property owners to participate. They do not have to participate in this process.
But I just, just to follow up, just, it doesn't impact, let's say, the value of the property in that it has this designation of in need of redevelopment?
I don't believe so, but.
Okay, I'm sure that might come up.
It might come up, yeah. I believe the second one.
Fire access, both, I guess for both the salon envy property and for the apartments behind the daycare center, seems very iffy.
Yes, so I think that falls under the section three criteria, which contains to include things, infrastructure, utilities and access. And access is not a singular form of just vehicular access, it can include fire access, can include pedestrian access and bicycle access. So I think including those properties would improve fire access, and it doesn't have to just be salon envy, it could be from the South Second site. Richard?
So I have a question that sort of piggybacks off of the. Flat question. With regard to how this designation affects homeowners. So individual property owner. Whose property has been designated non-combination in a redevelopment area. Does this restrict or put any restrictions on that property owner, should they want to alter their own property? Do they now have to go through a different process than they would any other resident who's not in a redevelopment area?
That's a good question. So with respect to the designation, it has no impact on zoning or what they can do with the property. They can proceed as usual, as if it never existed, or this would never. The only way that would be impactful is if we did a plan that restricts them. But I think it's clear, I think we talked about it briefly at a council meeting regarding Cleveland Avenue, we're both expressing. We do not want to restrict a single family homeowner, and that is, and that's be my recommendation, when we do a plan, that we don't restrict existing single family owners. In fact, most cases in plans I've done elsewhere, other communities where, if it does involve a lot of single family dwelling, that they are provided the ability to do the same thing they have in. But if they are sold and brought into the redevelopment project, then different stance would be, but basically. We would pull in the existing single family dwelling, first of all, as a permitted use. And let them do the same thing that happened, if they choose to sell, then they can participate, or any property owner can participate in a different project.
When you say if they choose to sell, if redevelopment partner hasn't been identified and that single family homeowner wants to sell their home. Because for whatever reason, they want to sell their home. Are they free to sell their home to anyone on the open market, or is it just being designated to be purchased by the borough?
They can do whatever they want to sell, and I think in this case, if anything, it might give the conditional redevelopment the ability of, okay, I have the authority. To bring this property in, but they still have to come to an agreement to buy the property. The existing property owner is not obligated to participate, meaning sell or be part of the project, they can sell and they can do everything they want.
And I had another question that was separate from this. So in the sort of investigatory process where you're going in and looking at a number of different properties that were presented this evening. There were a number of conditions on properties that you found that were pretty concerning. Specifically to me, the property that is, that was formerly the Kit T Bubble Tea Shop, that is now a new bubble tea shop. That's undergone a very beautiful renovation.
Yes.
Any of the sort of deteriorating conditions that you found in the buildings, are any of the owners being tasked with making those? Remedy any of those conditions?
As part of this process, no. My main purpose is to mainly focus on what I observed entered for them. Unless I'm told otherwise, I don't think this process was intended to get people in a gotcha moment, and make them be a violation of various. It's just what I observed, that whether the borough chooses to do with it. It's up to them. That's, that's kind of the approach I take with all other things, this is, I'm not here to catch and do something wrong, just observing.
Yeah, just a couple of questions about renters, both commercial and residential renters. There are a number of them in the post expansion of the non-combination redevelopment area. How does, how does relocation, relocation assistance play out in a non-combination designation versus a combinational designation? In other words, when you have to redevelop a plan and the developers negotiating with one of the property owners. Do renters get assistance if they have to be relocated?
So to be fair, I don't know the answer to that question, but from what I understand, council, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. But anytime there is a active business or an active renter or a property owner in their own home. Has to be a way to, it's called a workable relocation plan, and it implies full businesses and full residences. We put in all redevelopment plans that they require to by statute, the process they have to allow for relocation. As to whether there's assistance through that program, I'm not aware, good question, I'll get back to you on that. It's also, in a way, it's a little bit more critical that the affordability that exists, in this case, this is the special needs unit lot thirty one. It's de-restricted, so if the borough were to engage in a process with a redevelopment that wants to use that property. They will have to deal with that de-restriction, either lift it, find another unit somewhere else, whether it's in the property or somewhere else, to preserve that affordability. So there's even more steps to be taken regarding affordability.
Okay, yeah.
That's a good question, yeah.
Yeah, my question was related to that de-restricted affordability control. Do you know if, if there's a replacement, let's say that that property is redevelopment. Would a replacement property pick up on wherever the existing property is along that thirty year restriction? Or would start the clock anew on a new thirty years?
Good question, I don't know the answer, but I would. I would recommend that the borough would start a new thirty year clock. So I think there's been a recent case law where the borough and municipality has authority to extend the controls after expiration of the thirty years. And in many cases, some towns are doing fifty year restrictions. It's a good question, I don't know the answer, but I would recommend that we start the clock and equitable unit. So if the three bedroom special needs, that unit needs to be somewhere else. And that's on top of relocation assistance, because it may not be the same family.
All right, so in either case, there would be no net loss of affordable housing units. Because we would find a replacement if this unit were, this property were redeveloped.
In that scenario, yes. I do not know if it's required by statute, but I think good planning would be part of that. And I would make sure that's done, and of course, that, this is not. Related to the destination, this is that we're looking ahead to the redevelopment plan.
Yep.
So it's not really related to the destination, but it is something that's on the lines of this particular.
Can a property owner request not be included in the designation? Can you reject being, having your property be a part of it?
I believe the process is, as part of the notice and procedure, they have to notify all the neighbors, and if, once the borough council takes action, based on other recommendations of planning board. They have forty five days to appeal. Typically, I'm not familiar with the results of that are, with general procedures following that, but they do have the ability to appeal.
So based on tonight's proceedings, the borough will notify all of the property owners that were involved in tonight's presentation. That they can appeal and object to their property being part of the redevelopment area.
Just, just because not tonight, but the borough council takes action.
Okay.
That's when the clock would start, not tonight, doesn't start the clock, it's not until the borough council takes action.
And, and, and they can't, it must be the borough council includes them in the area. They're in, they can challenge the legality of that decision, but it's not a voluntary thing, there's no opt out. Well, if they're either in or out, and if they're, and if they're in, they can, they can challenge, they can go to court and challenge the legality.
Yeah, and to the sense there are two methods of public notice, obviously a public hearing, but I do notify that there's a study being presented. If the planning board makes a recommendation to designate certain properties as area need, and the council takes that same action or takes a different approach. Or use different properties, let's say you own three certain properties, the borough is still doing it. When they make that designation, they also have to notify the public, and I believe that notice has to include procedures of, you have the opportunity to.
Have any of the owners in these new properties have any show of interest?
I'm not aware, I'm not sure if you have any information about the dialogue between the conditional redevelopment and somebody's property. In fact, the conditional redevelopment already owns one of these lots, lot number one.
Right, so the conditional redevelopment owns lot number one right now.
Yeah, all right.
And I believe that are in, the conditional redevelopers in, has been in ongoing regular talks with the reform church, which owns lot thirty one. And so that has been on the, the discussion as well. I'm, I, I don't want to, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think that there's also lot nineteen. Conditional redevelopment may have an interest in, the others I don't believe that it does.
Yeah, when we contacted them regarding the process, they go on, engage in a dialogue. Terry Gobera assisted me with getting in contact with the property owners, where she had a contact information. And, you know, obviously when we first contacted them, it was like, what is this, are you taking my property? No, we explained the process, it takes a while, this is the comfort level, in some cases there is few access, but. I would say, to answer your question more clearly, we have contacted them, but you can progress through the process. But I am not privy to any conversations about actual redevelopment.
I have another quick question, did you say that developers have an interest in lot nineteen, as in?
So I, I want to, sorry, I want to be very clear. I, we should check that, I believe that the property, the conditional redevelopment has an interest in nineteen, but I. I don't know that for sure, I do know that he, that on one and thirty one, there is, on nineteen, I think that there is, but I think we should double check that to make sure that I. I know more about that.
And I'm not sure those are proper considerations.
That's it.
For the word, in this proceeding, we're really just looking at questions that should have been designated.
Just trying to help.
Dan?
Kind of the flip side of that question, do we know if any of these property owners have expressed a desire to not be included at all? Again, not that that's necessarily something we need to consider, but just in terms of background information for what we're doing.
I will say that there's some concerns about it from certain property owners, but I can't, I don't want to put words in their own mouth and say they're not interested. So I can't answer that question.
I can answer the question from, the borough council has not been made aware of that from anybody coming directly to us.
Chris, I've got a couple of questions. Oh, you mentioned in the report that there's one of these properties that would be eligible to be included in the national register of historic sites. Do you know which one of those properties it is?
That's lot number one, two oh two Broward.
Okay.
The information I found. I, to be honest with, I'm not sure it was complete, I did check the data miner state website and it was shown as a potentially contributing. Let's actually, I'm sorry, so it's on a two thousand three master plan, I don't know that Ashley designated.
Oh, I want to understand the process a little bit. Oh, in your report, you've indicated that the plan will establish new zoning standards. For whatever properties are included in the area, and those zoning standards will supersede the existing zoning, they will replace, they're not supplemental. You won't have an opportunity to choose the existing zoning or the new standards, the new standards will supersede the existing zoning, is that right?
They can, there's two options, you can do superseding zoning or overlay zoning.
Okay, well, but you see, I thought you understood in, that you represented in this report, that Highland Park is going to, that they will be superseded. Is that not true?
If I said that, I have those in there.
Okay. Well, let me just play out the scenario, let's, I actually think that that's how Highland Park has done it in the past, but I'm not sure.
Yes.
But let's, let's suppose that that's true.
Could you make sure you're speaking into the microphone?
I'm leaning.
We hear you, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but let's just, my understanding is that how, that is how Highland Park has done things in the past, that they have been. They adopt the plan, the plan sets new standards, those now are the standards, you can't say, instead of. Doing using the standards in the plan, I like the old zoning instead, I'll just do what's in the old zoning. Let's just play out that as a hypothetical scenario. So we have here a number of properties that are potentially driveways. Aggress and egress, and presumably the new plan would specify that some or all of them are potentially driveways, and that's what they can be used for. Would the consequence be that if you're a property owner? Say of the Magnolia Street property, the most obvious choice. That. Looking down the road, the only thing you're going to be able to use that property for is part of the driveway. Surely that has an impact on the value of property. You know, when, when the next person comes along, they say, oh, what can I, what will I be able to use the property for in the future? A dark, a driveway.
Yes, that's a good question, that's under the assumption that that property is part of the plan. And we do superseding zoning that would not allow a house to be there for rebuild. And this is part of, we're sort of jumping ahead to a planning, but in this hypothetical scenario, I would recommend to the redevelopment council. Sorry, the borough council as redevelopment entity, make sure that doesn't happen. I think in my case, for proper planning, we should allow the house remaining, there's nothing wrong with the house. But if the property owner wants, is willing to sell to the conditional redevelopment, there will be an option to put a driveway in. That, that's my sense, I think we should preserve the home if it wants to be preserved, but if it's part of a plan. That's presented by the redevelopment as permitted by zoning. In this case, in a way, that lot would have overlay zoning, I would say. That will allow the house remaining, but if they wanted to, they could put a driveway, I don't think it would be appropriate. To mandate that it can only be a driveway, which in that case, it may have an impact on value.
Well, it has another kind of impact too, if you're, if you're the owner of that property and you look ahead. Can you say, I'm destined to sell this property to somebody for use as a driveway? Doesn't that inhibit you from making long term investments?
Well, again, that's assuming we say in the redevelopment plan, superseding zoning, they can't expand the house. In a way, you're, you're sort of doing eminent domain through zoning, I think that's a process we want to avoid.
Yeah, so it just seems to me that, you know, I'm, I'm very skeptical of the claim that, that the inclusion in the redevelopment area has no impact on value. I actually think it has a significant impact on value, and I think it has an impact in two ways. One is, we just both talked about, one is, it's going to have an impact on what the, what the future permitted uses are. And therefore, when you go to sell it. Your prospective buyer is going to look around and say, what can I, what can I do with this? Maybe I'm not going to be able to use it for the purpose you've been using it. And that's going to have an impact, at least an impediment to, to, to free transfer of the property. The other concern I have is, we have the potential to create light in places where there aren't. Because people say, it doesn't make sense for me to make economic investments on properties that are not destined to be used for use. uh, it doesn't make sense for me to make economic investments on properties that are not destined to be used for use to that purpose, and which I may or may not recover the benefit of those investments when I'm selling under these constrained constrained circumstances.
I agree with you one hundred percent, which is why I think when we are in the redevelopment planning stage, we're writing the zoning board. At least for me personally, I would want to avoid that situation happening, which is why I made a recommendation, and we're probably doing it on Cleveland Avenue, where we say, existing homes shall be permitted use, they may do expansions. They don't have to put a driveway in. That's between the property owner and the potential, well, in this case, the conditional redevelopment. We can't force them to that. We could, but I don't think it's in the interest of the borough to do that. There's nothing wrong with the home. It would be useful for expansion. But we're not forcing that process to happen.
Thank you.
Related question, kind of following up on that, is that in terms of the decision that we're making tonight in terms of designating these or adding these properties to the redevelopment area, um, so I feel like there's a lot of variables we could go to home in terms of kind of second or third order consequences of this or that designation and, for example, the combination of access points with number, you know, thirty one and third, was on the back, uh, the numbers in front of me. Yeah, yeah, nineteen, right, thirty one and thirteen and nineteen, and kind of a combination of access points. But in terms of the decision we're making for these properties, it has to be A through H or section three.
Yes.
And regardless of the validity of whatever these other concerns are in the planning, kind of downstream from what we're doing tonight, we can't take that kind of stuff into account in terms of the decision we're making tonight. Is that understanding correct?
I would say you should not.
Should not, thank you.
Other than anticipating, there may be cases using the section three criteria where it may be appropriate to expand or access. In a way, you're sort of jumping the gun, you're thinking that it is a cart before the horse, that issue is a challenge we have all the time with the redevelopment law. Because I'm basically asking you to contemplate, this could be useful, there's no plan, but wouldn't you want to see a plan if access was truly usable? Just related?
And related to that, kind of, one thing I wanted to clarify is that you mentioned a couple times the master plan and the presence or absence of driveways facing Rowan, and the phrase you used earlier was nonstarter uh, in terms of having vehicular access uh, from directly from Rowan Avenue, because we want to kind of preserve the pedestrian safety along that
Yes.
that walking corridor. Um, does that impact those decisions uh, for section three in terms of access to other points?
I I believe it does, because as part of justification, where those lots would be appropriate for access, whether vehicular S three or fire access, because the alternative of having driveways on Rowan Avenue is simple, it's not, it's not permitted. Again, whether it's in current zoning, the redevelopment plan, or any future redevelopment plan, we would not want access from there. If it was permitted and we wanted driveways off it, I think you can make the case, you don't need lot thirty one for access. But you may be able to use it for, let let's say the boundary line of the existing redevelopment area was sort of checkerboard as clear boundary lines, a property could be appropriate to be included, whereas it off, because as you know, a building that's nice and rectangular with a parking behind it has a, if you can have the parking area behind the building, directly behind it, it's an appropriate module. Typically, buildings are about sixty to seventy feet, ten feet setback or the drive walkway, and then a sixty foot drive. Altogether, including setbacks, we need about a hundred fifty feet for an appropriate building and parking. But that's else secondary. In this case, we're sort of relying on access. There's many ways to use section three. And it's again hard to justify without seeing a plan, but the borough has contemplated access from side streets in two thousand and five. So we're sort of using that same methodology that well would be, especially since South Second is so close. And we also think it would be appropriate to use lot one's driveway. Let's say the house was moved into the redevelopment plan. We wouldn't want to use that driveway, it's too close to intersections, especially if more traffic, a lot more traffic. Lot thirty one is even better, because it's further back, you get on street parking on South Second, and it's more of a straight pattern to a middle, basically the back, it's actually perfect for parking lot access.
Since you've been waiting so patiently, I was just going to jump ahead and ask if you had a comment or a question to come up and take the microphone. And just give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Debbie Gerber. I live at ten South Third, lot thirty nine.
I gotta swear.
Sorry.
You have to be sworn in.
You have to be sworn in. Debbie may raise your hand. This is where the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth.
Yes.
The truth, the whole truth. I was going to say, so we got.
Yes.
It's all true. Alright, thank you.
My name is Debbie Gerber. I live in ten South Third Avenue, lot thirty nine, as you called it, above, I live above the music school. I have lived there for nineteen years, and I just appreciated your question about renters, because I rent the apartment from the owner of the music school. And have done so. So I I wonder what will be my future and where will I go? So that's my question, basically.
So given that you're here, I think it's appropriate to contact our redevelopment attorney, Joe Alman, as well as Terry Gobert, to get your information so they can share what the responsibility of the redevelopment would be if this property were included into the designation and further merged as part of the plan. So we'll try to get you the answer that you're looking for, see what your options are.
Thank, thank you. May I ask, may I ask Mr. Gerber a question?
What, I was just, yes, go ahead.
Just, um, I want to step back for a second, talk about sort of the overall area, and I think, um, I think as you you told, story started from two thousand and five all the way to today, is that we had some properties on this street in the combination of redevelopment area, and we expanded it, and and again, and one of the things I think that I'm curious why you didn't use criteria E, and I know the long street of Galloway then for criteria E, but in twenty thirteen, as you said, the state laws, you, as you remarked, that it expanded and allowed for this non-combination redevelopment, you need a redevelopment, and it also extended, expanded criteria E. Uh, and so you were in your reference statement in your report, and now goes so far as to include, um, not just real property, but real properties um, and similar conditions that impact land disassembling and discourage undertaking the undertaking or improvements and so forth. Those are necessary language from twenty thirteen, and it suggests, it suggests to me that we have a lot of small lots. The first redevelopment, uh, destination in two thousand and three, the first redevelopment in two thousand and five, we haven't seen significant redevelopment in eighteen, eighteen years from now, almost nineteen years. So, uh, I'm curious why some of these properties do use criteria E, create section three warrants, three of the seven, three of the, three of the seven properties, and and not maybe criteria E, which, um, you know, when you look at the nature of the parcels you're looking at, suggests to me that the diverse ownership of the entire area is contributing to a stagnant and not effective use, and I think maybe the issue of cri- of section three, we're asking, we're, you know, asking for three properties uh, for us to use section three for instead of criteria E, um, I I have, I actually have a little, I am a little concerned with the use of of section three here, rather than criteria E, and then making an argument for for criteria E.
So the reason I didn't really rely on criteria E is, in a way, it's a third rail issue, because, uh, as you discussed, it's our issue regarding property ownership title issues, and if I recall, Gallanton case really shows that twenty seven word case. So it pertained to property ownership entitled, but the issue with that study in two thousand and seven, Paul's, I think, was that it relied only on the fact that there were, it was unproductive, because it wasn't being used to its full potential. Uh, but I believe the courts indicated that, in addition to that, you must also make a finding that it is it presumed to have a negative social, if you have to do or if you and. Uh, that's what I recall. I'm looking at the case law. I I know, I think it was another case in two thousand and fifteen, forty six, or Main Street versus. And they sort of, I forgot what the case that was, but I remember two thousand and fifteen, it sort of brought back the abilities of use title E, so they clarified in the record that the uh, the restriction that was applied by the courts in Gallanton only applied to criteria E, because in that time period, it was very difficult. Everything was up in the air about how utilize some of the criteria, but that case, uh, in two thousand and fifteen, now we're to focus to only criteria E. I don't think that answers your question, but I was hesitant to use that, because you have to prove that there's a property ownership title issues as well as the under by the condition, can't pick one. I felt that the other criteria A, D, and section three were more appropriate. If the board finds that a criteria E would be used for use tools as as indicated, I think the board could consider that as part of certain decisions of council. There's nothing wrong with the board making a tone. You don't have to rely on that in my presentation. You can make your own.
Are we voting on these properties individually, or is just like a block by?
Can vote for all of them together or decide certain properties if one of them are the recommendation.
Can I motion to separate lot nineteen?
First, before we make any motions, I'd like to make sure that, A, we hear from Russ if there are any more questions, and if there are any more questions from, are there any virtual questions or anybody on Zoom call?
Just one person.
So I I hear what you're saying, that's a perfectly reasonable, so if the board is done for now?
I would, I would rather have our discussion.
They talked about before.
Before, before, before we make that motion.
Well, yeah, that's, that's.
After we, after we've had our discussion, that may have, may indeed be an appropriate motion, but I would rather postpone, do it in the right sequence.
Okay.
You know, since I would love to hear from the the person who's perhaps been waiting online to make, you know, a comment or a question, and we'll, then we'll go to continue our discussion.
They're now raising their hand, but you can ask them if they.
Well, if if they want to, they're they're welcome to. That's what I'm saying. If not, you know, we'll move on. They're called.
They are not making any.
Okay, so we'll continue the discussion. Um, I'd like to keep things in some ways organized. We're approaching two hours on this one issue. So, um, for some reason, my forearm's cramping, but it's neither here nor there. Um, yeah, um, I think we could just, you know, well, why don't, go ahead.
Could we maybe hear from Kalidra?
Yeah.
Why we, if if the motion that I understand it would be, uh, everything except nineteen, can we hear the kind of rationale?
Yes. Okay, um, so of the properties that are listed and presented before us tonight, lot nineteen is the only lot that is wholly owned by a private residential property owner that's not part of an LLC, is not a commercial mixed-use property, it's not a property needed for affordable housing, it is just a regular residential home. And I, uh, as a member of this board, have concerns about making a designation for someone's private property that could potentially have very big impact on the value of this property. We don't know. And so for that, I would like to single this property out, uh, for voting separately than the other ones.
Yeah, I I I understand the motion. Uh, Chris, is, there's nothing to stop, obviously, this developer to talking to this individual property owner and coming to an agreement. And within this property, if they, I guess, if they bought it, then they could apply for a designation or something like that. It doesn't, the fact that we do every one but nineteen now doesn't preclude something happening in the future between the developer and this individual property.
That is correct, um, and that could happen now.
Yes.
Under the rehab designation, you could have a plan that involves that lot, of course, will maintain any use of the permitted use. But more critically, that sale could still happen.
Okay.
Build a plan.
No, it's it's a very reasonable, uh, post. Uh, any other?
Yes, I have a question. So is it, are we thinking that that this may negatively impact the value of the property?
I think it can potentially negatively impact the value of this property. I think it can potentially negative, uh, potentially have a negative impact for the property owner if they decide to sell this property down the line and it's designated as a redevelopment area or it sort of boxes this property owner in to where they feel like they can only sell it to the developer and then for how much they could get for it versus if they were to put it on the open market and it didn't have this designation. I think the property owner should absolutely be a part of this conversation, and I don't feel comfortable making this judgment for someone else as with regard to something so important and valuable as one's equity in their home. So that's my resolution.
Why do you think it would negatively affect that?
Well, um, if it appears that the only use for this property would be in the future to be potentially torn down to be made an access point for a potential building that could go on track C in the future, or whatever the plan is, we don't have a plan. So that could potentially, um, give a buyer pause if they're looking to maybe purchase that home. Or, and 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 it could devalue the property, not saying that it would, but it may have the potential to. And I just don't think that we should make that discussion, that decision for someone without them being here. I think they should be a part of that conversation.
Because they're privately owned.
Correct. It's not a misuse commercial property, where all the rest of the other properties pretty much are.
But I think it does, it does combine two thoughts. One, that they really should be part of this discussion, not an LLC or. But I still don't understand, um, how it would decrease the value of property, I mean, part of it. But, okay.
Again, I I I agree with.
A lot of it is just perception.
Yeah.
I mean, it could absolutely have no issue at all. The house, it's a really cute house. I love that house. I pass by it whenever we go to the farmer's market. It's a great house. A lot of, um, value is perception, and I think we should take that into consideration.
On the flip side, somebody coming in and buying it, regardless of the designation, will see the parking lot next door, will know about this supposed redevelopment going there, so that would impact it. But, you know, I have no objection to, uh, same, you know, removing it from the whatever, so, but you had a question, Matt.
I guess my my question. Do you mind if I?
Grab your hand.
Sorry. Uh, uh, I'm I'm not unsympathetic to the idea of 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 the consultation there, but but wouldn't the potential for positive or negative effects on the property value happen if it ends in a redevelopment plan, not by being designated one way or another? So if it is in a redevelopment plan, certainly there is capacity for 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 either positive or negative. I just, I'm not sure that I see having it designated in an area, um, as 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 we're doing tonight, has the potential for that, um, market conditions. I think that the next step may have the potential for those market conditions.
But I think the next step is more feasible once it's part of the designated area.
Possibly, but but I I guess I I I'm not convinced that right now that this is.
But in order to create the plan, the plan is based on the areas that are designated for redevelopment. If this is not included in that designated area, then the developer.
But it also doesn't have to be included in a plan. So it's because it's designated tonight, doesn't mean it has to be designated in the plan.
I hear what you're saying, and I and I I totally understand where you're coming from. I still very much feel that the owner of that property should be a part of that, a part of this conversation.
To be clear, the borough could still do a plan that involves lot nineteen without this designation. And to Matt's point, if it's designated, choose not to include it. There's like three different ways I can go. I I think to the degree of what.
Anybody who hasn't spoken yet, Alan?
Yeah, see, the owner of the property has attended multiple of these types of meetings and has never indicated she'd be negative about being part of it. And she, she also was notified, I believe, that this is on the topic tonight, and she's not here. So.
I I don't want to come out that they may be on vacation. I I don't want to speculate why they're not.
All right, a couple more and then.
So is this, in terms of our purview as the planning board, as opposed to the governing body, is this a consideration that we could consider in terms of tonight, in terms of making this designation? Because we're, the report is very specific and very narrowly tailored for criteria A through H in section three. Our decisions have to be based on criteria A through H in section. Our decisions have to be based on criteria A through H in section three. And there are certainly other valid considerations in terms of this decision-making process. What I, I'm wondering, question for you, question for, sorry, I don't know your name is the normal. Is this a kind of consideration we should be using in making, in terms of the decision we're making tonight as the planning board?
For today, I believe we should keep our considerations strictly to the confines of the testimony of the planner and within the local redevelopment law, which is a privilege of section C or the A through H and the section three, which he provided extensive testimony about. I mean, obviously, there are some ancillary issues, but for, we don't want to keep going down this rabbit hole. Like, I feel like a lot of these questions were put in the cart before the horse, as we've heard numerous times tonight, and it's inevitable to happen in situations like this. But we got, I believe we should keep it within the confines of what the testimony of Mr. Katsanza was tonight and within the applicable law.
I, I'll let other people talk before we.
I actually want to come back to a particular property, lot 39. And, you know, I think, I think a lot of your testimony on this parcel, putting it, making a recommendation that it meet, doesn't it, you know, criteria as a criteria D relates a lot to the parking design, parking lot. And as I was reading the report, you know, you talked about it, which was that county board approved waivers in 1993, related to the change of use from a travel agency and the fact it was not adequate parking available. And some of the conditions of that parking lot, I wonder if you read it in the minutes to that meeting or the resolution, it seems to be that county boards, our predecessors would have looked at the condition of the parking lot, the things that you document, and apparently have made or approved the request with the parking lot design as it is. And so I'm not sure that this design of the parking lot is so deleterious that it poses a public health, safety and risk. The county board looked at this parking lot design. If there were issues with it, then planner would have made a recommendation, make improvements and so forth. And if that didn't happen, then I think, you know, I think that's telling. And then also, I think we have resident who may be use that parking lot. Like if you're from the resident too, whether or not it really is a public health, safety risk that this parking lot design poses that. And I think, I think if it doesn't, then I think, you know, I think, I think we're on weak ground for finding a criteria for 39, you know, add that, section three again. So now we go up to four parcels. So anyway, that's just my comment and a question.
So with regards to the prior approvals that were granted on the property, this also relates to the driveway that was granted by various lot one. In that case, a little different, it was done without permits, they get approval, got the approvals. I would say notwithstanding board approval prior, or prior board approvals, I still have to look at the current conditions as relates to the criteria. Did that mean I'm critiquing or criticizing approval prior boards? So I believe that I have to look at the current conditions of the design. It doesn't mean the, it's obsolete with today's standards. For example, citizens in Princeton, parking lots were approved all the time, but today's code, I think best practices is parking lots are last year's, definitely parking structures are more appropriate. There's a case law supporting those obsolete conditions, even though parking lots were obviously approved in years past. In this case, specific to the parking lot of lot 39 and driveway of lot one, even though they were approved by the boards of this community, I don't think that negates the nominee criteria.
I also have a request, I don't know if we can ask, of the resident who lives in such property and may be used for the parking lot, whether or not they feel, or do you feel it's a health, safety risk?
I have to say that I have to be really careful. I park there all the time, that is my parking space, and I have a handicapped brother who, we were talking about the wheelchair access. I have, I have to think about that and hold to decide so that he can get into the car. But it is, I have to be careful. I think everybody who pulls out of any driveway, that backs out of any driveway has to be careful and I have to be very cognizant of the fact that there are pedestrians. So I pull very slowly out and I look and I try to be really aware of that and stop just so that if people are coming that they, you know, see me and stop. So I think it is, it is, I understand what you're saying, in all honesty, but in 20 years I've been doing that and I've been trying to be very careful.
You've never hit anxiety, right?
Not yet.
Never hit anybody.
But it is badly designed, but I wanted to have a mirror there. I wanted to have like a mirror set up that's something that would help.
Could do better. All right, let's see, one last statement and then we'll go and take up your motion.
Oh, so I've got a few things. So I want to thank Chris. I thought this was a very good report, very clear, very thorough and very candid, and that makes our job easier. From my point of view, redevelopment is the howitzer of land use planning tools, is the most powerful tool we have. And so one shouldn't use it casually. We, everything we do should be careful. And it is my view, and I think reinforced by Chris's testimony, that even the designation has negative consequences, and so we shouldn't do this lightly. There are circumstances where it's absolutely appropriate and this may be one, but it's a weight, we should treat it as a weighty decision. It has consequences. And so that is, that is the way I will view it and I would urge the board as a whole to treat it that way. I am particularly concerned about the three properties that are in the, in the proposed area only under section three. And I just want to go back to Chris's report where he quotes the statute, because I think three different places in the report, maybe four, but the key words are, the properties themselves are not detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare, but the inclusion of which is found necessary with or without change in their conditions to the effect of, whether the area of which they are a part. So the operative word here is necessary. That's a very high standard. It's not, it would be a good idea, we ought to be thinking about it, maybe sometime in the future, we might want this. We're talking about three different possible ingress and egress. We're not going to use all of them. It's very hard at this point to say that any of them is necessary. And I appreciate Chris's, Chris's point that it is a little weird for us to have to make that decision before we see a plan. And I, and part of my view is, in some sense, this is premature, that at the point where the, where the, there really is a crystallized plan, that is the right time to come back to us and say, now we should expand, expand the area because now we know what the plan, what the, what the proposed plan looks like. I confess, I do not find any of these sites, any of these properties necessary under the statutory standard, and I don't think the statute permits anything less. You know, we have bandied about other kinds of words in place of necessary, but in the end, the statute, statutory standard is necessary. And so I have a lot of, a lot of concern about whether any of those properties really meets that standard. I'm also a little concerned about the other properties. It is my impression, I'm glad my house is not a candidate, because I'm a little concerned. My house would be, would be deemed in need of redevelopment if it were a candidate. But I'm concerned that we are, we are relying on things that are readily remediable. You know, there are, there were two properties where one of the, part of what made it dangerous was overgrown shrubbery, bushes that, that, that reduce cyclones. Well, you take your chainsaw and you cut them down. You know, those are not, so those don't strike to me, strike me as being conditions that meet the criteria under the statute. So, so I'm not prepared to, the only, the only property that I'm really comfortable saying meets the statute is, I think it's lot 28, the 38 rather. Yeah, lot 38 with the, with the four apartments behind where they really do seem to be.
13?
I'm sorry, that's 13.
No, it's, it's envy and the, and the ones behind. Oh, there's 38.
Single apartment and the pool?
Salon envy?
Yeah, it's the one behind envy. The envy and the one behind, that's the one. Yeah, that was, that was the one that I was, I was confident meets the statutory standard. All the others seem to be marginal. And just a little concerned that we're, we're exercising this power in situations where, where the, we're right on the cusp. We're not clearly in the, in, in the realm of what is deteriorated or absolute.
I certainly respect your opinion on that and a lot of respects, I agree a lot of what you said. This was not a cut and dry court as it was with Stop and Chalk, ample evidence every single corner as well as new adjacent sites. This was a very difficult report to write and with regards to section three criteria really pertaining to access, yes, it's the cart before the horse concept. I do feel it is necessary to provide access other than just mechanisms. So that's why I find it appropriate lot 31 to be included to be a site. And if that's included, it's more appropriate for a building for property development for success of the redevelopment to include lot one. If those two properties are the, are appropriate for the destination. If not, criteria D for lot one, then you could use section three criteria as well. Lot 19 is mainly to facilitate improved access by increasing the buffers adjacent properties if it were included. As far as the other lots, lot 37, certainly next to it, at that point, I think, when do you, where do you stop? Well, keep them adjacent to it. It's, that's the issue, that's the challenge you have. I think lot 37 benefits from being included in section three because the lot 38 and 39 are adjacent to it, which has some deteriorating conditions, but they, I do agree, they are on the cusp. I do believe that they do meet criteria and would be better included into more successful redevelopment project if they're included.
Okay, at this point in time, I'm going to close the discussion and we can start entertaining motions. To be my understanding and the attorney can, you know, that if Kalidja, let's say, comes forward with a motion that says we'll approve these except this one, a yes or no vote would be solely on that motion and that other motions are free to come up to, if it was rejected, let's say, but if it's approved, that would be the motion going forward to the, to the council, correct?
Yes, and I mean, since we, we don't have to, we can refine which ones you recommend. I believe it might be the who of us to.
I know, I was going to have her refine it, but I just, would you like to, you know, make your motion?
Yes, but before I do, are you saying that we vote on these properties individually or my motion should just be for any property that I think should be singled out?
I believe that we could do whatever we want. We could have six or seven different motions, one for each property. We could have a motion for all properties. We could have a motion for all properties except one. It depends on how we vote. Am I correct in my understanding?
Yes, and I mean, one option would be to bob all the section three property or lots into one vote. I'll bifurcate that further, I mean, for interest of time.
You know, I just don't want to get bogged down more in about how we're voting, nor do I want to, let's say, so perhaps an, an up and down vote on each property? Would that be, what would you?
I'd move to take a vote on everything but lot 19 and then take a vote, separate second vote on lot 19.
Second best.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded, so roll call. Excuse me, is everyone familiar with? What's that?
Which motion are we, which vote are we taking?
Oh, do all firsts? All except 19?
Yeah, correct.
That is the motion on the floor, all properties except 19, which is the privately owned property adjacent to, on, coming on Magnolia, adjacent to the access point to the parking lot of the church. Roll call.
Mr. Bretcher?
No.
Mr. Chin?
Yes.
Mr. Eisdorfer?
No.
Ms. Hadhazy?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Just so I'm clear, we're voting on the first six and then we will have a separate vote on the second one, so we're voting to approve the first six?
Yes.
We are excluding 19 from this vote, then yes.
Mr. Linares?
Yes.
Mr. Proman?
Yes.
Mr. Stern Cardinal?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes. Okay, so that motion has passed and now is a separate motion on the floor for the approval of lot 19? Is there a motion for that?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Bretcher?
No.
Mr. Chin?
Yes.
Mr. Eisdorfer?
No.
Ms. Hadhazy?
No.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Linares?
Yes.
Mr. Proman?
No.
Mr. Stern Cardinal?
It's a genuinely tough decision. Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Okay, the understanding that the chair has is that all properties that both votes were in, where both motions were approved and that both the one, two, three, four, five, six properties will go and as well as lot 19. That's everyone's understanding?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that was good. I mean, well, good's an interesting word, but it was definitely informative. Let's see if there's any other business on the, any correspondence, Scott, zoning? Hey, let's see, any public comment on any other issues here or online? At this point, I'd take a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All right, thank you very much.